Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's now six o'clock. We'll call City Council for Monday, October thirteenth, and I will call this vote.
Mr. Lamb?
President.
Walfer?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Here.
Our end session, I'm going to begin by associate question from Melissa Smith, the Senator, United States of Church. If you want to come up, everyone, what are you saying? Are you saying that? What's your way?
Let us pray. Oh, God, we are so grateful for this day. You've given us a day of recognizing the turning of the seasons, that recognize that you were still in charge of this world and you were still working and working in this world and working in our lives. I pray that we would recognize you, recognize your love for all people, recognize you working in the lives of people in this world. Thank you for the city council. Thank you that they are working on behalf of people in our community. And I pray that you bless them, that you bless their work. Thank you for this community of Lenore City. And thank you that you are working in our city as well. May you go with us tonight. May you protect us. May you call us and hang us under your image. We pray in the name of Christ. Amen.
Ask Mr. Wilber to lead us into play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's no need to change some previous ministry. I'm motioning for production.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields. I will call this vote.
Mr. Lamb?
Aye.
Walfer?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get started, uh, got a statement here I want to read, and then we'll proceed with the agenda. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight's on City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Tommy Daggans on behalf of City Council staff, welcome you here tonight. Tennessee law goes every ten seconds to write to the Tennessee City Council meetings and deserve how their government is doing business. We appreciate that each of you have taken time from your own personal schedules to be here tonight, see how your city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you do not have a copy of the agenda, you can pick one up over at my left as table. In order to do a efficient business like meetings, council has adopted specific rules of law. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, moving, ensure all points, views are heard and considered, and provide common courtesy. In a few minutes, we will come to a place on the agenda entitled Comm谏 Citizens Regarding Island or Islands on Tonight's Agenda. We will also come to a place on the agenda of Comm谏 Citizens Regarding Islands or Islands on Tonight's Agenda. During this time, anyone who has signed in, they speak as the mayor and council, and the courage to do so. We do however ask that you wait until you have been recognized by the mayor. I have been recognized, please press the podium to address the City Council. We ask that you deserve three simple rules. One, at the beginning of your presentation, please say your name for the record, your address, and address all questions to the mayor, please avoid the use of, please avoid the use of improper language, if found any other inappropriate conduct. Once the citizen input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed through the mayor's agenda. You are welcome to stay in certain meeting, but would be advised that public comments will be limited. We ask that everyone remember that we are doing what's business here tonight, and our responsibility for all of us. Please help us do the business, deserve these rules we've established for our meetings. And again, welcome. All right, end report from Mayor City Council. This time, I motion we approve the City Council agenda is written.
So move.
Motion, Mr. Simpson, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kennedy, or Mr. Brandon, Mr. Wilber, I will call.
Kennedy.
Lamb? Aye.
Walfer?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
All right, at this time, does anyone here like comment on an item that's on tonight's agenda? Anyone? Mr. Bond, have anybody?
The gentleman, we do. I'm not sure if they're on the agenda or on the.
If it's on the agenda, please come up and one at a time.
Right there, raised his hand, right there. I don't know if you can see him, Mayor, for the podium, or for the.
Behind Mr. Tanker.
Behind Mr. Tanker.
Okay.
The guy behind Mr. Tanker, the gentleman.
Yep.
Is anyone here like speak on something on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
So that, I believe that's the major round here.
If you will, just state your name, Mayor, or your address.
My full address, uh, just the street name? Yeah. Okay. My name's Anthony Duran. I live on Shawberry Road here in Lenore City. Uh, the new high school plan for Simpson Shawberry Road and Highway 321 poses a serious public safety concern if road impacts are not addressed. A W V L T news report from August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five documented a decade of dangerous traffic, school traffic at Eaton Elementary in North Middle, gridlock on Highway seventy and three-twenty-one, emergency vehicles back, then even a sheriff deputy T-bone responding to traffic. Despite years of complaints, no road improvements were made. We cannot repeat that mistake. Simpson Road and Shawberry Road are active emergency routes to Fort Loud Medical Center and are used daily by Morning Point Senior Living Transport vans. Before any requests goes to Loudoun Council, or Loudoun County, this council should produce a full traffic impact safety study detailing vehicle impact, emergency response delays, and required road improvements before the school opens. I have a link to the article if anyone would like it. Thank you to the council for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Is anyone here like to speak on any items on the agenda? Anyone else? Come on up. I don't know who's in order, if not, so it's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Simpson.
Good evening. My name is Matthew T. Gar. I live at seven-nine-five Glenbridge Lane, just behind Lenore City High School. Thanks for letting me come up. I know, um, one of the main agendas, uh, items you have tonight is the, the, uh, traffic and the road improvements at the new high school. And I just wanted to say that in the, there's been some question of whether there is an official approved T-Dot traffic study, and there is, there are designs that are in development still. The traffic study is complete and approved by T-Dot, but there are still modifications that will be made to like the turning lanes off of Highway eleven and retaining walls there, things like that. So, but as far as the traffic study goes, that is complete and approved by T-Dot. Um, I would like to say, I totally understand, you know, where you're, you're coming from and your perspective, because where the school is located, it'll impact some of the, some of the traffic on different uh, different intersections, especially on Simpson Road. So I, I get, you know, your hesitation and that you, you know, want to take a look at it and discuss it with each other before you, you go forward. Our, um, I think that one of the things, we've been trying to get this to the planning commission since May, but for one reason or another, we were not put on the agenda. So I think that we could, we could have been where we are now a lot sooner, you know. I don't, I don't know if the communication wasn't great between the architect and the city planning. One says it was the other one's fault and, and I wasn't in on those conversations. I just know that we've been trying to present this to the planning committee for, for several months, so that we could address, you know, any concerns that, uh, that the city had. In the, in the design, in the, the thought process, we do have a lot of the traffic going off onto eleven and not on Simpson Road for those reasons, because we will have, uh, the sheriff's department there to assist with the entering and exiting, uh, traffic at, uh, arrival and dismissal. That was part of the, the plan we put and submitted to T-Dot, so that we didn't have to have a lot of traffic coming in and out on Simpson Road. If, if, but you know, there are improvements that need to be made in, you know, our, where we come, where we enter mainly and where we exit, you know, that may shift as well. But because of the cost that that would incur, we, we chose to take people in and out mostly off of Highway eleven to save the taxpayers' money instead of redoing, uh, different intersections along Simpson Road or Shawberry. So I just wanted to kind of give you some of the reasons why most of the traffic exit will be exiting off of Highway eleven, like when you are in your discussions about what you think would be most appropriate.
Let me say, Mr. Tanker, since I've heard the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, and talking to Mr. Simpson, uh, and talking to you today, uh, I'm very concerned about it because I know who's going to get the blood of it, Lenore City Governor, uh, what is all over said and done with. And, and, uh, of course, Lenore City Police Department assists the sheriff's office now on three-twenty-one at the mornings, I know, maybe in the afternoons.
Yes, sir.
And of course, those, those officers are not always available. And, and, uh, so that's a big concern that I have. Uh, there's no way that you'll ever convince me. And, and I'm, and when I say you, obviously, I'm talking about county.
I understand.
Uh, there's no way that you'll ever convince me that, that some of those cars are not going out on Simpson Road and coming out of Burbank. And therefore, in my opinion, that intersection needs to be done. Now, I have Robert Jackson here. He's a third-party reviewer, reviewer. And, and, uh, I met with him along with Ray Buggner. And, and, uh, and I'm going to ask him to speak here in just a second. I promise he need to be out in thirty minutes. So, uh.
I would like that as well.
So, uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned. And of course, the traffic at, at Simpson Road and Shawberry as well. And there's no way that us will ever make that turn if it's not redone. And, you know, we had some people, and there's one of the, uh, gentleman that just spoke with Eastside Air, that was concerned about the subdivision that, that failed, uh, to get annexed. And, and as I told those people, I would be more concerned about the county high school going in and the traffic of twelve hundred cars a day than I would the subdivision. And, uh, so it's, it's, uh, if we don't make the county do it now, if something's not done now, uh, it'll be too late. We will never get the assistance, uh, later on down the road. You know that. You've been involved in county government.
From the county?
At, from the county. And, and, uh, you, you know, it is, I mean, uh, it, uh, uh, it, it will just never happen if it's not made, if they're not made to do it now. And, uh, uh, they're putting twelve hundred cars plus on that road. And again, I know there's been some discussion about a gate, uh, and not that car speed. You know as well as I do, that's not going to happen. If the church is having a, a function at night, and there's a football game on Friday night, uh, never going to happen. And so, uh, that's my concern that I, I drew this into the planning commission, and of course, they turned it down again. And that guy was, the guy that he had, uh, there's several questions. He couldn't tell you how many parking spaces was going to be in the place. And, uh, he was certainly prepared when he came for a planning mission, from what I see. And, and, uh, so, uh, I, originally, I wanted to build on the agenda because, uh, I would think the city council would be concerned. But I would say here, uh, traffic, 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 just like I do. And, and, uh, and certainly, this is going to have more of an impact on that those intersections.
Yes, Mayor. Like I said, I totally understand your perspective, and I understand the relationship that city government has with county government and their, the manner in which they cordially work together, and we can say it that way. So.
There's one thing Manny Shaver done. He divided governments in Loudoun County, that's for sure. He's, he succeeded in what he said I was doing. He, he divided governments. Lenore City, Loudoun City, and Loudoun County used to work together. That's no longer happens. And any, any, uh, county official that says that, they're misleading the public.
Well, in my role, I don't represent any of those.
No, no.
And so, all we want to do is make a facility at the, the best rate that we can for the taxpayers, the most economical way.
Sure.
One of the ways we looked at that was taking the traffic onto eleven with assistance of the, of the sheriff's department, so that it, so there weren't massive improvements that needed to be made. And I'm not here to change anyone's mind. I just wanted to give you some information about our thought process in, when we were doing our design and, and leave with that. I'm fully aware of the, uh, interworkings of our government, uh, and our, both our school systems here. So I, I understand. I see everyone's perspective. I work for Loudoun County Schools, and I want to, you know, just represent them and them alone, and say that we're interested in taking care of the county kids, providing them a, a place to go to school over here. And however the traffic issue is worked out, I'm, I'm sure we'll get there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Aman, I know, but can I, can I stop just a second? Because I promised Mr. Jackson that, that I had him out here. He's got about ten minutes, and then I'll let you speak. Mr. Jackson, you come up?
Sure. You didn't have to do that.
Well. I'm not going to go on this.
Uh, my name is Robert Jackson. I'm with Ajax Engineering, um, one-one-eight-one-two Black Road, not so intense city. I was asked by Coretta to do a third-party review of the traffic study that was done by Cannon Cannon from high school.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Initially, uh, the review was back in the summer, and I had a couple of comments and some follow-up questions for the study, uh, for the Cannon Cannon. Based on that, they came back with a response letter and revised the report. Um, but the biggest issue as far as the city's, city side is Simpson Road. You guys just pretty much hashed it out already. Um, they're saying all of the traffic's going to the highway, Lee Highway, but they're also, and they're, they're also saying that the connection point to Simpson Road will not be used for arrival or dismissals. It won't be used for special events. So the big question is, is it going to be for emergency purposes only, or, or what the exact reasoning for having a second access point to Simpson Road via the parking lot at the church? Because if, if they do not control it, obviously, people are going to use it. Um, and if it does get used, there are a couple of issues on Simpson Road that you've already pointed out, Shawberry at Simpson. In the existing conditions, the report states that it already warrants a turn lane for Shawberry onto Simpson Road on the southern end of U S three-twenty-one. The report says, at this time, it doesn't look like it's, uh, traffic signals warrant, that it needs to be monitored in the future. And thirdly, was the entrance, uh, the north, northernmost access point that they're using at the church, the site distance is inadequate looking towards the north because of the vertical curve. They did recommend putting some advanced warning signage in that. So I guess the, the big, big overall issue in the study is, needs some clarification on what the second, second access point is, Simpson Road, uh, whether it's just for emergency purposes, and if so, it needs to be tightly controlled, because if not, it'll be used. If it's used, the study didn't look like, didn't account for any of the school traffic being, um, on Simpson Road. So a lot of the recommendations were based on the fact that they weren't going to have any traffic on Simpson Road.
Can you speak about the traffic, uh, concerning Highland Park School and the new school that was in your report? You pointed out, uh, you, you had it in your notes there of your report, if I remember correctly, that how it was going to affect Highland Park School traffic?
Um, they, I didn't personally look at that. Um, I just primarily concentrated on, um, Simpson Road review. But in their original report by Cannon Cannon, they did recommend, um, maintaining a police officer there for arrival or dismissals, like they are for the, how, for those.
I, I don't know what report he was reading from. Maybe it was Cannon and Cannon, but you spoke about how, how the Highland Park traffic was going back up considerably. Uh, do you remember that, Greg?
It's in the T-Dot.
It's in the T-Dot. Okay. Do you remember that?
No, I, I did not.
In discussion of Highway eleven?
Yes, it was, it was, uh.
In part two?
It was in the report that traffic was going back up considerably, uh, with Highland Park School, with the new school, that's out as well.
Well, yeah, of course. I mean, you'd be adding a whole bunch more trips there onto the highway combined with existing schools. So, but, yeah, fortunately, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't review that part of it.
Okay.
Get any comments?
No, no, that's okay. Can you speak on that, Greg?
I just asked him to look at the Simpson sides, because that's actually in the city. The planning commission would like him to review the whole traffic study and get a better picture on it. That is something I've already set up to, for him to do.
And you spoke there about the T-Dot report. Where does that report at?
I've got it on my, he's got it, call him too, but that covers the Highway eleven side. He just has to review that whole entire report and not just focus on this one side.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any, any questions, Mr. Jackson?
No, I would like to see Jack, uh, move along and try to, try to include his looking at the Shawberry roadside, for sure. And you're saying, you already talked to him about that, and that's going to be the case. And Jack, if you could get back with T-Dot again and see what I would have to be done on three-twenty-one and, uh, and Simpson Road, because that's going to be a, be a problem, especially even, even if it's just football games. And I can't see, I mean, Mr. Tanker even, uh, mentioned, you know, that they were going to use that, that, uh, Simpson Road, but maybe not as much. But nevertheless, it's hard to have that there. It's hard to do a road through there and people not do it. I, I'm thinking, even if you had twenty percent of the traffic coming that direction instead of going out on eleven, we have a problem, because you dump, you dump twenty percent of that traffic. And, and that being along with Lenore City High School, Highland Park School, and, and the, uh, Lenore City Elementary and Middle School. You dump all of that traffic, everybody getting out at the same time, and trying to go to home or trying to go something, you know, whatever their need is for the day. And we have major traffic problems. And this, this city, city council is responsible to make sure that we don't have issues. And that's why we're, you know, that's why we're hesitant to do and just approve, because the Lenore City Planning, and I serve, I serve on the planning, and we had never been involved at all with the traffic study or anything. I'd never read the traffic study. And not that we had to, but, you know, it would have been smarter for Cannon and Cannon, or whoever that group was, the engineering firm, that if they entitled, they, if they, uh, gave us a report and said, you know, this is what we're going for, because it's, we would have told them, you know, this, this won't work, and you need to take this study a lot further than what you have. I would have loved it for the entire traffic study to be included, uh, in Simpson Road, Shawberry, and three-twenty-one, because we're, you know, we're not going to get into trouble if it don't. And, and we're going to be the ones to blame for it, because once it's done and opened up, then Lenore City Council should have done something about that. Well, we're trying to do something about that. It was unanimous on the planning commission that we refused to approve their, their site plan. And I think if it come back to them again at the next meeting, they'll, they'll disapprove it again unless they get some information. As the mayor touched on, the representative from Cannon and Cannon that night, he knew nothing. He didn't know how many people were going to be able to stack on, on Highway eleven, uh, how much traffic was going to be on Simpson Road. He didn't know anything. Didn't even know the number of parking spaces. And you tell me that if you have a football game out there, because that's what that ball field's going to be built for, for a baseball, baseball game, where's the traffic going to go? The school's out. You know, they're not going to go through the school parking lot, because there's no place here close to them to park. They're going to park in the, in the church parking lot, and then they're going to go on Simpson Road. They have to come and go on Simpson. There's no other way to do it. But, uh, Mayor, I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak, and that's, that's, uh, that's all I have.
All right. Anyone else?
I, I would like to say something. Highway eleven, I know it's not in the city, you know, I don't, but I don't know if you've ever tried to go to Highland Park and pick kids up. It's almost, you, you're sitting there, sitting there, sitting there. And that's with the traffic now. And let alone whenever, if the school opens with the influx of flow there, it'll be an hour and a half trying to pick a kid up at Highland Park School. And it got you going all the way up around the top of the back to Highland School to get them down. So I don't, you know, I don't know what the answer is. But I know something needs to be done in big time on Highway eleven if they do that.
But in the report, Cannon Cannon says that, you know, of course, you need to have a, a police officer out there to direct traffic, which is typical of law schools. I mean.
They got them there now.
I know, I know.
They got them there now. It ain't hard to get across the street.
Well, that's just, I mean, unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast sometimes with schools. I mean, you get a huge influx outgoing, you know, traffic all at the same time. Um, you can't put a traffic signal there. I mean, you can, but it usually doesn't warrant one. Um, so a lot of times, they rely on police officers to direct flows. I mean, it's not going to be pleasant.
And you look at it that way, if you put a red light there, they'd be backplugged to Dixley Junction.
Yeah.
And I, I plum in through town. You know, there's not enough room for cars to go up and down Highway eleven with influx of a new school or whoever. You can't hardly get in there now.
Well, I just, you know, finally, just want to say, I mean, I'm not specifically criticizing Cannon Cannon. They did the report that they were asked to do, which is assume that all traffic goes out to the highway. It's just, it's just very, there's no clarification on what that second access point is, Simpson Road. It's got to be blocked off. If not, it's going to be used. And if it's used, it needs to be included in the study of the traffic on Simpson Road.
Thank you. Appreciate you, uh, taking time. Yes.
Mayor, one more comment. The fact is that this school should never have been built or planned to build in this situation. I feel strongly of that, and I've expressed that before, you know, but this, that's not a good location for the school, for a high school especially. And it's not needed to start with. I say, I think it's one of your commissioners is being vindictive and, uh, trying to show us who's the boss. And he's, he's leaning and spending the taxpayers' money to get even with the city.
Spent a lot of money on lawsuits, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, two questions.
Mayor, two questions. First of all, speaking of sending taxpayer dollars, how much are we spending on the traffic study, and is, is that going to get paid back by the county since it's their project?
Yeah. Good question.
Well, for a fact, the city portion, whenever we do a traffic study, and we had to, we also had to do a review of the storm detention pond that sits on city property that's not theirs. And that agreement that they brought before planning commission last time is in the process of getting rewritten now because it was wrong. So the reason that they weren't on the planning commission before now is they didn't have everything to come to planning commission, which we explained to them multiple times, and that does the reason that it was turned down. But they've got a detention pond and that traffic study on the city, that would have been done on any project. And when they come in to pull their permit for the city, we recuperate any fees that we pay out at that time.
Okay. Follow-up question, for those of us who weren't at the planning commission meeting, what exact, what, what part of the project has to be approved by the city?
The city itself is that detention pond that sits in the city. And to make sure, because they're planning on tying in a county road that goes through the school property and tying into the church's parking lot, that parking lot does not meet the city street standards, so that parking lot will have to be dug up and made to match a city street with that much traffic coming on it. So that means, you know, eight inches of gravel, nine percent compaction, two and a half inches of binder, inch and a half taco to meet a city standard. But, because it's no longer a part of lot at that point, it becomes a city street.
And we're talking about this, the main entrance, is that the main entrance onto 11E that you're, or onto, sorry, Shawferry, that you're talking about? Are you talking about the secondary one that we don't exactly know when it's going to be used?
It's the one that comes through the church's parking lot, and they could, the traffic could use either one of the entrances to the church there, because it opens up wide completely to their parking lot. And try, I don't know how you would control that traffic at that point. That's some of the questions that we posed to them out of the traffic study review. Not all the questions have ever been answered. So when planning commission asked, this is what we have. And, you know, there's still a lot of questions out there that we haven't received answers for, for. So it's twofold. You got a portion of it that's in the city, that's our department. The other part is in the UGB, which has to be approved by the planning commission. So it's a twofold situation just because of the way it's laid out.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Robert, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Okay, Tracy. Tracy, sorry.
My name, my name.
Yeah, it's all right.
And I'm short. Basically, I'm, I'm a little upset with Mr. Tinker in the fact that he made the comment that he's trying to save taxpayers' money, but yet I, I don't feel that that's true. If they were trying to save taxpayers' money, we wouldn't be in this mess, and they wouldn't have put the cart before the horse and actually planned things out if it was needed. But, you know, that's for a different day. As far as the gentleman that was just up here, I had asked him earlier a question, and he basically told me that Cannon and Cannon, or even his department, they base everything off of the information that they're given. Well, come to find out, there's a lot of things that all of us do not know. We, everybody has a lot of questions. We're not getting any answers from the county. I went back to look at some footage to get some information, and lo and behold, Coke had told at the February 8, 2024 meeting that they could expand the campus. They could go up another level, and in putting that other level on there, they can add an extra thousand students to that campus. A thousand kids, another thousand cars. That was never mentioned in this traffic study. Not one thing about it. Not one thing was mentioned about the kids that go to school at First Baptist Church, and how many kids that they can serve, not even the kids that they do serve, but how many kids they can serve. We have so many things that have not been done correctly, and I appreciate the fact that the city planning didn't rubber stamp this and send it on, because this is not in the best interest for this community. My daddy and myself, within like five days, went through every house subdivision around in that area, got at least 66 signatures from people saying that they didn't want this in their community. And I've even had people reach out to me after the fact saying that they didn't know about it or else they would have signed it. This is nothing but a nightmare and a traffic hazard, and an accident wait happened. When the Coke guy was here the other night, basically, he stood right here, he could not answer anybody's questions. He couldn't answer any of my questions, Michelle's questions, Pat's questions, or the planning commission's questions. When he couldn't tell them that he didn't know how many parking spaces that he had, he said, oh, well, you know, we've got the agreement between the church. Well, if you're going to put a gate up, how are you going to be able to use those parking spaces over there at the church? They can't get to them, so obviously, you're not going to have a gate up, just like Mr. Simpson said. There is no guarantee that traffic is not going to come in and out on Simpson. And to be perfectly honest, there's no guarantee that people won't park in the church parking lot and walk their kids down to the school, because they don't want to sit in line. I, my daughter went to Linnor City High School. When I come in, did I cut through the subdivision? Yes, I did, because I didn't want to sit in the line, and that was before all the improvement out here. Was that a good idea? Probably not. Did those neighbors like it? Probably not. But we were always late and in a hurry, so I had to try to get there as soon as I could. That's what's going to happen here. The other concern is with the ball fields, that stadium holds 2,000 people. That's 800 more than what a school holds. What are you going to do with that traffic? My father lives right beside this. According to just the drawings, with no other information as far as footage, storage, how many vehicles can be stored in that storage lane, it goes on past his property, past his driveway, and who's to say that my daddy is not going to have some medical emergency where he needs to get out or an ambulance needs to get in? That has happened recently. He does, he is sick, he has cancer. So how is an emergency vehicle going to be able to get to him or anybody else who's on Highway 11? How are the, the people that live on Simpson that I went to go visit to even ask if they wanted to sign the petition? I literally took my life in my own hands trying to get out of their driveways because it's so busy already, not to, not to mention the, the school and its traffic. We have tractor trailers just deep from the entrance of this school that are going to be coming in and out there at the garbage facility. They're in and out all day long. Do you think it's wise to put 400 kids that are thriving, that are in the 11th and 12th grade, in a situation with these tractor trailers? Right up the street is Butler Brother Trucking. Those are commercial vehicles, those are dump trucks, sometimes they're hauling rocks, sometimes, sometimes it's asphalt. It, it's not a good combination, and to me, with everything that I have found out, the, the fact that they can add another thousand students to that campus, the fact that they didn't take into account for that, I respectfully ask that you not only ask for these improvements on Highway 321, but you also ask for another study to be done, and all of this information included. Because obviously, the county is going to include only what they want to, just like a certain commissioner does. They only tell what they want to tell. They don't tell everything. And I don't think that we can make a very good, educated decision about what's going on unless we have all the facts and everything is written down and agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Who else?
Michelle Britt.
Who?
Michelle Britt. Three.
I'm out, shoot.
I said everything she just said, but I've got more to add.
Okay.
When this whole project, I want to say, okay, when this whole project started, there was an agreement between First Baptist Church and the Board of Education. And part of that agreement was, is that we would use the road, we would share the road. The traffic studies that you all are talking about, I read them. There's not one, there's not two, there's not three. There may be four in the works now. The last one I saw was three. The first one was turned down because of exactly what's going to happen on Simpson Road. So they run back on the second one. No, first of all, I asked for the first one, knowing that they had a second one, and they sent me the first one. So I ask, I went back, said, I know you've got a second one, I want to see it. Second one comes back. It doesn't say what Mr. Tinker said. It says all traffic, not most traffic, all traffic. Well, egress and ingress off of Highway 11, every bit of it. Now, we had an agreement with the church, and we need to stick by that agreement or whatever their agreement was, but it appears that the agreement has been changing. I was privy to an email between a church member and someone else, in which the church is asking, they want this to be their private road. That's been their tip from the beginning, in my opinion. So this traffic impact study, the Coke representative comes and they talk about, you know, we're going to go this way, we're going to exit this way, we're going to do this. Well, we weren't allowed to ask questions, no questions. So I sent a records request the next day, asking the questions. One of the questions I asked was, the president of Coke, she did not indicate whether it was one-way or a two-way street, and I wanted clarification. Will the road from Highway 11 to Simpson meet new road county standards? And the Coke president stated, all exit will be in this direction. What does that mean? And this is what I got back from our county school. As with any records request, we believe the documents speak for themselves. And they didn't even give me all the documents. We have a problem here. When I look at you people, I don't see city, I don't see county. I see fathers, mothers, grandmothers, grandfathers. We owe it to everybody. It is your responsibility, and I do think, I disagree, I think you have curfew over this whole land. From what I've read, from what I've seen, you do. The county is not doing their job on it. They're not going to review it. You have the lives of our children and the lives of our citizens in your hands, and I'm begging you to do what you can to help us. And I so appreciate being able to get up here and speak and not be called names, not be bullied, and not be harassed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britt. Anyone else?
I have Pat Hunter.
Pat.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I reside at 416 Chestnut Bridge Drive in Linnor City, Tennessee. The new county middle high school is mostly in the county. However, it is located in the Linnor City-Robin Road boundary. This has been a concern to me as to who has the jurisdiction. I think Council Lady McNabb shared the same concern. I wrote to the planning official, who is Mr. Jacobins, because I wanted clarification. I don't want and is or buts, I wanted exact answers. Since, question, since the north school campus is in the county, when will the county review the site plan two? Because I knew it was coming for you. Answer, we will not. My other question was, when will the county planning commission review the traffic impact study on Highway 11 under review and not yet completed by T-Dot on the new school north project? Answer, the new middle high school site plan is being reviewed by the Linnor City Planning Commission. That's the planning commission. The county's not going to do anything. The only thing they're going to do is, question, what jurisdiction, Loudoun County or Linnor City, will review the site, will, will review the school building project currently and future, entire building phase? Answer, the county will review and conduct the construction of the school. And that's exactly what I was told by the planning official. The site plan was strictly under the purview of the Linnor City Commission, Planning Commission, and the building phase would be the county and also the state fire marshal, because they have jurisdiction over the building. So my emails are public records, I'll be glad to furnish it to anybody. I have concerns also. I asked for the traffic impact study, I can't tell you how many times, I never received it. I had to receive it from someone else because the school board would just still want me. And I go to the meetings. I was at one of the meetings on February 8, the school board meeting, when Mr. Brian Pierce gave Derek a brief update about the school building program, including the new county middle school. There were no handouts, and the meeting was not recorded, other than my own private video recording, so I have, I have tangible proof. Mr. Pierce described the new middle high school. He commented about the expandability, the capability for this school. Director Garrett asked, can this be expanded? Pierce replied, it can be expanded, it's true. We have an area here, and he pointed to the corner. It's not a very good picture. But he pointed to the corner of the drawing to show where it could be expanded. Pointed to the drawing, with two stories, we can add 22 classrooms. If we go three stories, we can go 33 classrooms. So I can add another thousand kids if I wanted to on that side, said Director Garrett. Yes, on that side, replied Pierce. That's the truth, I'm going to, Director Garrett. I was just making sure the board knows this site is capable of being expanded. I record meetings because I go to too many meetings, I forget, I'll be real honest, but I can go back and play it. And I can play it and play it until I have it memorized. I, I think the biggest concern is about the traffic. We all go either Highway 11 or Highway 70 to irrigate. I know I'm going to shop at Costco's or Publix when it's open. So we're going to be traveling down those roads. And one concern that I heard at the planning commission meeting was the number of school buses. Guess what? When this started, I was concerned, because living close to Linnor City High School, one time, I counted 16 school buses from the county going to Linnor City High School. Why are they going to the high school? Because we've always cooperated, and the city and the county cooperated. If our kids went to the county schools and went to the high school, guess what? They got transported from the elementary or the middle school to the high school. So we're talking about 18, 19, 20 school buses. And you start lining them up at the high school, we finally have, after years and years and years, we finally received relief from Linnor City Council, because we had a major improvement that addressed a lot of issues. We widened the lanes, the, the road, you put turn lanes, you put sidewalks, and those are the kind of improvements that we need on the front end, not 20 years later, not after all the accidents, not after all the mayhem. That's what we need from the front. From the front end, we need good planning. We're not seeing that. I traveled down Shawferry. From Shawferry on Highway 11 to the transfer station is one tenth of a mile. From the transfer station to the Harrisburg home is another tenth of a mile. To the entrance of the school is another tenth. So from Shawferry to the So from Shawberry to the new school is three tenths of a mile from Shawberry. If you go down Shawberry and turn to Simpson Road, I almost dread it because if I have an S.U.B. or a UPS truck, someone has to wait to let the other vehicle through. Because of that tight corner, it's dangerous. Now, it's probably going to be like the Eaton Elementary School, where the parents park at the church and walk the children to avoid being in a long line. I think we're going to probably see the same thing because we have the pole park, ball parks, located in the parking lot, next to the parking lot. And of course, the big issue is Highway 11. And I think that this Highway 11 issue, and Pierce said that they're still working on it, and at the same meeting that I went to, February of 2024, they had just submitted the traffic study. So look how long it's taken. And according to Pierce, they're still working on Highway 11. I believe that Highway 11, Shawberry, Simpson, and 321 fall under your curfew. And I hope that you look at all these issues. And like I said, my emails are public records, I'll be glad to share it with you. But I think the but stops with Lenore City. I think you're right in being very cautious and wanting this addressed upfront. We were told at one of the meetings that they have the $120 million, $80 million earmarked for the school, that that would be sufficient money to address all the infrastructure issues and costs. So I hope they're addressed, and thank you very much for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Who else?
So I have two more, I think though you're out of this office, you know.
Is anyone here to speak on the item on tonight's agenda? All right. This time we'll go into the agenda. Item number one is discussion, consideration, city council request, and we'll see regional planning commission to require the Loudoun County School slash Loudoun County to approve the intersection 321, Simpson Road and Simpson Road and Shawberry. The public welfare secretary requiring it due to the Loudoun County High School being built. And of course, you've heard all the discussions and, and again, after hearing the planning commission meeting, I listened to it and, and of course, I've already said it, I have concerns that a lot of traffic is going to come out those two intersections and, and put a burden on the, the welfare and safety of the citizens of Lenore City. And I would ask that we send a, you authorized me to send a letter to the planning commission, asking them to, those two intersections were being done, not approve any plans, not just, not just the road plan, but any plans. And, and so the city attorney doing so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I would, it may be premature, but I would love to make the motion to, to approve item number one and to require the county to do that. And I would also like to add that they do an independent traffic study on Highway 321 and Shawberry with the impact it's going to have.
321 and, and Simpson.
Shawberry, Simpson.
Right. Okay, Mr. Motion makes, or Mr. Simpson makes motion with that addition. I'll ask for a second.
Say.
Second, Ms. Brandon, open up the discussion.
I would like some assurance from the city attorney that, that we're not overstepping our bounds as the council to, to have this directive sent to the planning commission. Are we basically kind of trying to do a workaround about changing the requirements that the planning commission already has in place? Because I don't want to end up in another lawsuit because it looks like we are trying to indict one, one applicant, let's say. Obviously, this is a very unique circumstance. I think it's a horrible location for a high school, but I don't want us to end up in another lawsuit. So from a legal standpoint, could the city attorney opine about, you know, what are our responsibilities as a city council and what can we do in terms of requesting the planning commission withhold approval based on these intersection improvements?
Well, as, as you know, anybody can bring lawsuits against anybody for anything. So there's no guarantee of, of any particular result. I do not believe that we violate any, obviously, our planning commission is a separate board. It's intended to be separate, to exercise their own jurisdiction and their own judgment. Now, you can say, well, is by sending a letter to the planning commission, are they overriding the will of our planning commission? I would say that after being at a planning commission meeting, that that's absurd. Anybody thinks they're going to override the will of Leon Shields and the rest of the planning commission, Mr. Simpson and, and others, it's simply not a rubber stamp for anything. I do not see anything wrong with the mayor sending a letter expressing the will of our city and our citizens and asking them to scrutinize it carefully before approving anything. I don't see anything wrong with that. I don't think we can direct the planning commission to reach a particular result when we can ask them to scrutinize closely and make sure that everything is taken care of to protect our citizens here in Lenore City. As far as lawsuits concerned, I mean, you know how that is. Anybody, there's a lot of lawyers out there that have nothing to do and would be happy to make a little money and sue us. So that's.
Okay, so, so you feel like the language should be in the, in the way of asking the planning commission to scrutinize the decision or the review of the, the process, the application process, not directing them to withhold approval pending an agreement on these improvements?
Well, I mean, I think that's, that is not telling, it reached any particular result. In other words, to scrutinize and make sure that they have done what they must do. That is, you're not saying, when you say withhold approval until, well, until they have done what they should do, that's the same thing as scrutinizing it carefully and making them perform as they should. You know, you're not directing the, the planning commission to deny under any circumstances, which I think would be overruling the will, if you could even do it. I mean, they, the planning commission would be free to ignore anything you say. It's an independent board, they're not bound by what the mayor wants, or me, or you, or any, or the council itself. They're an independent board. So in that sense, I don't think there's anything wrong with sending a letter to them and using that particular language because you're not requiring them to reach a specific result. You're saying, do not approve it until they've done what they should do, which I don't think there's any problem with that. Now, maybe it's just semantics and I'm making less of it than, than you are, or more of it, I, I don't know. I, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Okay. Could you also, you know, give us some perspective on what the city does have control or approval authority over it? Is it, you know, what, what about the urban growth boundary? And what does, what can the city exercise control about with regard to the project in the UGV?
Yeah, that's, that, you know, that's a very complicated area of the law, as my father was saying. I don't carry that particular body of law with me. You know, it does, it's complicated. And it's, it's, it's an issue of our municipal planning commission is also a regional planning commission. And therefore, they're different. It's different, it's under different statutes. But, you know, as I, I'm not prepared to give you a definitive answer on that. I would say that the planning commission is submitted to planning commission, and we're going to say that since it's, it's there in our planning commission, and particularly the municipal part of it, with the pond and the, and the road, that's our planning commission. As there's been question about any jurisdiction over that. The question of the regional planning commission might be some issue, but currently, it's in front of our commission, and we have to act in good faith and, and, and that we will exercise our power as the planning, then when I say we, I mean our planning commission, will exercise the power that it has. Now, whoever, if the county decides, well, you didn't have the power to do that, then I guess they can, can take that position. Just like I said, you know, anybody can sue anybody for anything. If they want to undertake to ignore what our planning commission says, which I can't believe they would do, I mean, and they're no different from anybody else who's going to try to build something, the Krogers is going in over there, they're going to have to meet the same requirements as everybody else. And I can't believe that the county would take a different position from that. I mean, they know what the problems are. I mean, it's not like the citizens of Lenore City are not county residents too. I mean, you know, they get the same blowback that we do. I see we've got a county commissioner with us tonight. I mean, she's hearing the same things that we're hearing. Everybody's worried about that traffic. And until it gets taken care of, and I think it will be. But, you know, the question, the jurisdiction of the regional planning commission from Lenore City versus the municipal planning commission, you know, that's, that's really complicated. And I'm not prepared, I guess that's a long answer, saying, I'm not prepared to answer that question currently.
I mean, I, I think we should get it answered because, you know, not just, okay, what can our planning commission approve? But if the county is saying they have the power over the building, the construction part of the school.
I heard that too.
You know, then, then we need to know whether, as a city, we agree with that or not. Because if we believe that we have jurisdiction over the construction process, then we need to be asserting that on the front end, rather than waiting until they're pouring footers and putting up steel frame and then say, oh, wait a minute, no, no, let me, let me have Mr. Buckner come and look at that because that's going to be too late also.
Mr. Buckner says that we're not, is that right, Greg?
We're not.
We're not. We're not in charge of the building and the construction of it. And obviously, he's been here a long time, he knows his job, and I believe what he's telling me.
Mr. Chairman, I stand by my motion.
Okay. I have a motion, second, anyone else, any other discussion?
I, I encourage this council to vote in favor of this because it needs to be scrutinized. It's, it is public safety and welfare that is at risk, it is a very dangerous intersection.
And, and that's the key, it is, it's the public safety and welfare. And, and I think Laura has had you talk about that. And Miss McNabb, certainly, before I send any letter, I'm certainly going to give the city attorney his expertise in, in the matter and, and run the draft by him before he's sent. Anyone else? Pearl Collins, whether?
McNabb.
No.
Lomper.
Yes.
Kennedy.
I.
Shields.
I.
Brandon.
I.
Simpson.
Aye.
If I can just add, again, I disapprove of the project, but I feel like, I feel like we're basically telling the planning mission to do their job. And they know to do that, and this is already on their radar. So, you know, hesitate to send a letter telling them to do their job because they're already doing it.
Well, I just want the assurance that they're going to look at everything and that they're protecting the city and protecting those two intersections for the public safety aspect of it. Item number two is consideration personnel committee's recommendation regarding filling the vacancy in the program coordinator and the Parks and Rec Department. Ms. Kuzik is not here. Ms. Kelso, if you want to, I'll ask you, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, my voice is not very good tonight. We did place this job out for, you know, folks to come and interview. We did interview six applicants for the job of program coordinator. And Zach and myself did. And then tonight, we brought Ms. Cara Harvey as a recommendation before the personnel committee. And she's with us tonight, no pressure, you don't have to stand up if you don't want to. But we believe that she is a great candidate for that position in Parks Recreation. And believe she'll, she'll do a good job for the city. We think she has a servant's heart and a great organization skill set.
Chairman Shields.
Yes, committee met and we reviewed all of it and met with her and added questions in session. She seemed real educated and well versed in what she planned to do. She has a master's degree or a B.S. degree in, in mass communication. We feel like she'd be a good fit for the city. And so the committee voted to add it to the agenda. I'll make the motion if we go up.
Okay. Ms. Shields makes the motion. Our, Ms. Harvey, have a second.
Say.
Second, Ms. Brandon, Ms. Kennedy, or Ms. Brandon, do you all have anything you want to add?
I'd just say her resume was expansive and very impressive, and I think she'll do a great job.
Ms. Brandon.
Yes, I, I agree with them. We, we met with her Saturday.
Okay. Got a motion, second, discussion.
What, what are the job duties for this role?
So primarily, it is to, and I can get you a copy of the job description as well, if you'd like to see that. But it is event planning for all of our special events and, you know, other duties as needed in Parks and Recreation. So previously, we had, you know, reorganized the department years and years ago, and we're trying to get it back focused to where it was. You know, we had some people leave and retire, and, and so that's pretty much what it is. But again, I can get you a copy of the job description if you'd like.
No, no, that's not necessary. It's, it does, I mean, the resume is incredibly impressive, so much so that I worry about keeping her. She's coming from a job that paid $73,000 and taking a pay cut. And I know we don't have very many full-time Parks and Rec folks. When would she, aside from her cost of living increase, is there a step up for salary? How does that work?
So it would range from $50,000 to $55,000 or $56,000. And of course, this was given to her in an offer letter by Zach Kuzik and myself a couple, three weeks ago, I guess it was, Cara. And, you know, that's, that's what it was. Thank you.
Anyone else? Got a motion, second, whoever on the go.
McNabb.
Aye.
Lomper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
I.
Brandon.
I.
Simpson.
Aye.
Item number three is consideration personnel committee's recommendation regarding filling the vacancy in the fire department. Director White, Chief Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So come for you this evening with Paul U. Banks. He's a resident of Lenore City, graduated from Lenore City High School. He's also a graduate from Tennessee Wesleyan, has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Honored to, along with Director White, he was one of the first candidates that we interviewed shortly, within a few days of me, I hired. And very, very well-rounded. I think he'll make an excellent police department, or police officer for Lenore City Police Department.
Okay. Questions?
Was this job posted? You know, how was the process?
Yeah, so we, we take applications in an open format, and we take them on a regular basis. So he applied for the position, and that's why we're here tonight, Councilwoman.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Please make your next motion, I have a second.
Say.
Second, Mr. Shields, chairman, you want, Shields, you have.
We met on, and went over his application and his qualifications, and he seems like a real bright young man and has a drive at the police department, I'm sure would like to have, and he's worked there. So we recommend that we hire him.
Okay. Ms. Kennedy?
Nope, nope, nothing else to add, sounds like a good hire. He sounds like he wants to be here, and that's who we, that's who we want to hire.
Yes.
Brandon.
I, I.
All right. Have a motion, second, any further discussion? Pearl Collins, whether?
McNabb.
Aye.
Lomper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
I.
Brandon.
I.
Simpson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Item number four is consideration personnel committee's recommendation regarding filling the vacancy in the fire department. Chief Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My recommendation is for James Kincaid, he's a certified firefighter, paramedic. He has currently been working in the Clint Fire Department, and he is in the Tennessee National Guard as a flight medic and very well qualified, for the audience, and we recommend we hire him.
Got a motion?
That's a motion.
Yeah, second.
Say.
Second, Ms. Brandon, Ms. Kennedy, you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing else to add.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. We met and went over him also this afternoon. And Mr. Kincaid has all the certifications, I think, and all the education he needs. He's a certified firefighter and paramedic in the National Guard, still serving his country. And we recommend we hire him.
Is that motion?
That's motion.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Brandon, Ms. Kennedy. Anything you wanna add?
No, nothing else to add.
Any other discussion? Earl Collins, whether?
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Out of five, consideration city council regarding quotes for the striping in the project along the area of McGee Boulevard, JJ. This is not go, can I say too, this is not go for the person committee. I have one with another member of the person committee who's sick, one of them's in the hospital. And so I told Hammer just to bring it for city council. Go ahead, JJ.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the restriping, I don't know, stop bars, turnarounds, everything, crosswalks from McGee Boulevard down here, from 321 down to Rock Springs Road. And then I've got a piece at probably fifteen, eighteen hundred feet out there on Montladdy Cloud. We need to try to tie it in from Sampson out to Town Creek Road. And I got two quotes. That's all I can come up with. There's only two local companies. And I solicited one down next to North Georgia. But the first one is ninety-six hundred eighty-seven dollars and the next one was twelve thousand five hundred. But this volunteer, I've already got in the town on contract work with contract paving. And that's how we're saving a few dollars here.
The nine thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollar, the volunteer's stopping.
Yes.
Madam, you have a budget, JJ?
Yes, sir.
Discussion.
I would say thank you, JJ, for taking this on. I've got numerous calls about that stretch of road. It's, it's very dangerous. I almost got direct there myself. It's, it needs to be done in a bad way.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second Mr. Kennedy's motion.
Is that motion, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, yes.
Second, Mr. Kennedy. All right. Discussion.
Do you have one question? On the superior plug, it lists T dot six for four inch and six inch linens. And the other one is just four inch yellow and white.
Yes. Well, this is most all four inch work down in this area. The, the boulder six inch, it's, it, it sticks out, out on like state highways and stuff. But I'm just touching up here too, the state highway, so.
All right. So this is, the, the lower estimate is still gonna give us something that's compliant with, with T dot. Thank you.
Got a motion second. Whoever in the row.
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Thank you, JJ.
Thank you. Out of six consideration, city council regarding approval of employee Christmas bonuses in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars for full-time employees, a hundred fifty dollars for part-time employees, those that have worked at least past six months for the city. Which is something we did every year. Go ahead, Hammer. Go ahead. That I'm in the agenda. And so be happy to entertain any questions. Any type of motion?
No.
Motion, Mr. Shields. Second, Mr. Brandon. Discussion.
Yeah, on the part-time employees, it says those that have worked at least once in the past six months. So I mean, are we talking about, you know, our summer lifeguards? Are they, even though they're not employed, or not maybe lifeguarding by the time December rolls around, are they gonna get the bonus as well for having worked in the summer?
Yes, they would. That's actually why it's, it's stated like that, so that we can capture those seasonal people.
And do we have an idea of what that would, what that will cost total?
I would say it's not much different than previous years, especially last year. You've not run the numbers yet.
I'll tell you right now, to be honest, I would have to look.
You want to send, send that to me?
I can send it to you.
I, I was just being ballpark. I was just curious, but, I mean, not because of a hundred fifty, but just in general, to know what that would cost.
It's in the budget, probably. It's already probably there as far as bonuses, but we can.
You don't have much to add?
No, I do not. I don't have my budget in front of me.
You want to send it to you, Mr. Bell?
Uh, yeah, that, that's fine. I mean, just that.
I've got a budget, but I would have, you've got a budget in your basket.
Right.
You'd have to go in and add each department up. We did budget for that.
Cause it has to be split between departments.
But it is split between departments, so I would have to go in and add each.
We'll have to send it to you.
We'll do that.
I mean, we have a list of employees, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so it could be full-time employees times two fifty and part-time employees, one fifty, right? Okay. Let's make it easy for them. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any type of motion?
So moved.
Motion about the police commissioner. I have a second. Second, Mr. Brandon. Discussion. Earl Collins.
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Out of seven is consideration regarding approval of ready employees two hours on Tuesday, December twenty-third. That is something that we've done every year that the policy utilities do it. And so that's, that's pretty self-explanatory. I'll open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Simpson. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. McNally or Mr. Shields. Whoever in the row.
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Out of eight, consideration city council regarding casting the mandate, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and five, city council meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Brandon. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields. Discussion. Earl Collins.
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Out of number nine, consideration city council regarding casting the mandate, December twenty-second, two thousand and five, city council meeting. Try to make passage.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Brandon. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields. Discussion. Earl Collins.
McNally.
Aye.
Womper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Simpson.
Aye.
Madam, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to let the minute state that before the mayor and city council, you have the Tennessee State Comptroller's debt report on debt obligation. This is for Lenore City Utilities Board, electric bond. And we are required by state law to disclose that report with the mayor and city council.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, Milton, let me, I know it's been, sit there and been patiently. I appreciate that. I know we got two other folks on the agenda. Is that right?
No, it's just Dr. Smith and Bruce Langwell.
Bruce who?
Langwell. Mr. Langwell.
Ms. Langwell. Come on, I'm gonna let you go before Dr. Smith, but I know she's gonna be here a few minutes.
Well, I appreciate that. So, finally, Mr. Langwell, I live in Lenore City, about thousand five hundred mark of the road. I've been here since nineteen ninety-eight. My kids have been through the school system. So, Park, Middle School and High School, they're both now graduated. So, I'm informed by being here that you guys have proposed a request for qualifications for studies about sustainable growth, basically, in the city. I encourage that. I think it's a terrific thing. I think this thing, just tonight, the people come out and talk to me about what their issues are, is that, well, I'm just hoping it's not too little too late because we're way behind the eight ball right now, as far as I'm concerned. In my twenty-eight years here, I've watched traffic just on Martel Road. It's hard for me to get out of my own driveway now. So, I think we've reached something I call, when I work, as population saturation. I think growth here, sustainable growth, is an oxymoron. And what I mean by that is, is you can't have continuous growth in finite space. So, since I've been here, we've had endless development, more new schools, more parking facilities, more highway projects. So, and this is tough. I think that we need to take the wool by the horns and say, enough for now. Until we've studied the problem better than we have, because our performance level, you said it, we're not doing so great in terms of controlling growth within the city. It's not just to get our likes that. County's got the same problem. Nine county region, I've been to a number of those programs, they're all struggling with infrastructure, parking, utilities. I'm kind of pretty shit of the choir here. I realize that. What I really hope out of all of this is that we can think together in the sense of what, how do we get out of the problem we're already in? And then how do we keep from repeating it? Because that's what we're doing. We're doing the same thing over and over again. Permits go out, people build, they family high rise. You want density? We've got it. So, I hope that we can wait until this RFQ comes in, pick somebody who could, who has a vision to solve these problems, because they aren't gonna solve themselves. We have to address this. I know that, you know, these states are gonna change over the next five years. I want some sort of awareness and a vision from our community, hopefully from this request for qualification, to push us off the brink. Right now, you can't eat fish to come out of the lake. The air quality is bad. I'm afraid that this high school is gonna make highway level in passing. I can tell you right now that, that the light at Shaw Varius saved a lot of lives because of the amount of traffic that we generate. That's all made a problem. So unless or until we find a way to get, and I know this is impossible, to get the horse back in the barn and close the gate for a while, we need to be thinking about how do we resolve where we're going in such a way that we can survive. So, I know you all heard this story before, but I, we're right off the cuff now. I think we need to do something.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was it, wasn't it, Bobon?
Uh, yes, Dr. Smith.
Okay. And then, Ms. McNally. Let me say, before she gets started, that Milton, I had had some conversations about the proudness at, at the middle school. And she wasn't able to be here last time with us. And I did have Ms. Kelso pull the city council to see if they wanted it on the agenda. They did not. However, I told her to come anyhow to, to present whatever she wanted to present. I think, and I, I know there's some meetings set up with the city council on the tour of Lenore City Middle School. And I did tell Milton that early on, that, that it looked like the correct project. And I will have to say, and I guess the buck's ox for me, so I'll, I'll, I never get the credit, so I'll take the blame, I guess. But the, the numbers, and I had seen the labels numbers, but the numbers, and she can enlighten us or we can sit for herself. I'm, I'm concerned, city council, about the numbers and the payback and, and what the new school is going to bring. And I was at a talk with Dr. Shea several weeks ago. And she's been great. She and the school board have been great to work with. As you all know, I sit on that board as a specio. And I have conversations with the pair and, and current chairman and the past chairman and even some school members. And, but I'm concerned about the interest rate and the payback. Not that, I don't think that, and they believe that they've made the long payment. And I know they've done their homework. But I'm concerned about the cost that is going to cost. And the last, the last information I had, it was going to cost close, if you're right, if I'm wrong, on the twenty-three dollar bond, it was going to cost, they estimated. And of course, wouldn't know, don't know for the bonds. That it would cost approximately, below thirteen billion or close to fourteen million. And so it's not just the twenty million, it's thirty-four million over twenty-five years. And that concerns me. What I'm also concerned about is that if a catastrophic event happens in Lenore City. And I had, had Ms. Kelso contact the finance folks. Right now, we have big A, big A bond rating. What is this twenty million dollars gonna do to our bond rating? What if we have a catastrophic event? And, and Lenore City needs to go out. We currently have approximately ten million dollar in, ten million dollars in reserve. And what if we have to go out and borrow money quick? Can we borrow the money if we have such an event? And if so, what would that cost us? And that's certainly, I think, maybe on city council's mind, Milton, as well. And, and again, I know you got a tough job. I recognize, again, that, that you're at capacity at middle school. What would do? What's the new school gonna do? We can only estimate on having certain two moves. You may lose all of us out of the next great draw. I know. I don't think that'll happen.
I don't think so.
But we don't know. And, and so I'm concerned about that. And, and I'll shut up and, and let you present your plan and, and certainly open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the council letting me have the opportunity. I hate that I couldn't be at the combined workshop, but of course, I was at the superintendent's conference and got the works. I was not able to be here. So I understand there were a lot of questions and hopefully, I'm here today to explain some of your fears about what we're trying to do to serve the students, Lenore City students. I wanna make sure we're real clear on that. But it's so funny, first of all, I've got great news. And the great news is, we have a beautiful high school on this end of the county that is wide open for all of the students to go to school here. So that's the good news. I know there's a lot of concern about the traffic too. And the good news is, we already have a school and it's beautiful. And it just recently has undergone about nine million dollars of improvements. And we are so excited to have all the students on this end of the county as we have been for, for years. So let me just say that out loud again, for everyone to hear, that we are, we are wide open and welcome and well situated to take in any students on this end of the county. So just to make that clear. And then secondly, it's so funny, cause my, my husband's here today and he came here to come to this meeting with me. And I worked in Lenore City for nine years. I walked in and out of central office all day, every day for nine years. He walks out with me today and he was like, oh, my gosh, what's this picture? And the picture is the old middle school. Somebody on May have gone to school here. I went to middle school here. I don't know so many people have gone to high school here. I don't know. But we won't, we'll save that for another day. But this, this picture was in nineteen ninety. He looked at this. And you know what this is? It's a picture of the kids out in front of the school. And you know, the sign says, vote yes for a new Lenore City Middle School. And there are all the kids. And it says, for the kids' sake. First time I've ever seen this picture, and I've worked here nine years, I didn't see it. But I went to school here and I graduated from high school here in nineteen eighty-seven. And so the school was built. I think they were successful and we're just about to finish paying off that bond, by the way, for the middle school that we're looking at, trying to deal with now. So I would just say, it is for the kids. And this is not a competing interest. This is not, we are working together for the students in Lenore City. And I wanna address a couple of concerns that I think came up at the combined workshop. And also just share my thoughts, just so you're here for me. Cause you know, I've talked about this before and I'm very thankful for the planning commission for already approving our site plan for the middle school. So the way I've established this folder for you is really in three sections and it's section one, section two, section three. But the sections are really, the first section is, the, you know, what are we trying to do? And what we're trying to do, as you can see, you have two handouts there. The objective is to create a separate intermediate school. Uh, the objective is to create a separate intermediate school serving grades three, five, and a middle school serving grades six, eight. This project in doing that, if we move the third grade over, will actually provide a little bit of relief at the elementary school to make sure that we're serving our pre-K, second grade kids appropriately. And then behind that header page, you can see a drawing of what it would look like at the middle school, where we will have separate entrances, we'll have separate, uh, lanes for the buses so that we can make sure that our third through fifth grade students are separate from our sixth through eighth students. And I've shared the story with you guys, the importance of this. I know space is an issue and, and we're going to always want more space. That's a great thing to have when you're planning for academics and educational experiences for kids. But I have advisory groups that I meet with students. And I go and sit and hang out with them, we have lunch. And I just ask them, you know, what do you want? What do you want me to tell the principal? What's happening here? And when I met with the middle school, I had fourth graders all the way through eighth graders. The fourth graders, you know what they wanted? Y'all probably heard this story. I mean, Dr. Smith, can you talk to Ms. Long and Ms. Loane about, could we have the fire trucks come? Could we have the fire trucks come back? That was so cool. And I was like, okay, well, I mean, I don't know. They're kind of mean, but I think that would follow the fire trucks down. But then I had the sixth, seventh and eighth graders and they were like, we want another pep rally and we like spirit week. And, and, and that's just one story and they can tell you a whole lot of other stories like that. But what we're dealing with is an age group separation of kids that times have changed over the past fifteen to twenty years. We have social media, there are all kinds of different social emotional needs that our students have. My academic background, the materials, the instructional materials that we're using for our kids, all of those things are so vastly different. The scheduling at the middle school is extremely complicated because we now have to deal with certain laws around third grade retention, fourth grade promotion. We have intervention, we have tutoring. Those requirements are different at the intermediate grades than they are in the middle school grades. And right now, we have all of those students in the same building. All right, is it crowded? Yes. Do we need more space? Yes, we do. But that building was built as a middle school and an intermediate school. There are two signs on the building. Um, I have a really good friend that I grew up with, some of y'all may know her and you may know her dad. It's Jana Hill Klein. Uh, and I'm sure you know her dad, Glenn. But Jana messaged me last night and she said, I am so excited that you are thinking about doing this. It is so needed. She taught here when she first got out of school. She's a principal now in Virginia. But she messaged me and said, when they had to move fifth grade over, it, it was bad. We knew that it was coming. We knew that at some point, it would have to be third through fifth grade and sixth through eighth grade. So, our community is watching this, our parents, our kids, people that have been involved in this district for a long time have seen this need coming. Space is great to have, but what we're talking about is serving our kids. And we know it's the right thing to do. I said, I've been here for nine years. I wasn't the director of schools, but I was the person that was responsible for academics. And I was on Dr. Barker constantly saying, we have got to do something to serve our three, five students in a different way than our six, eight students. And I'm telling you, that's the priority of this project. It's, it's not about fancy. In fact, we put a lot of thought into this for over eighteen months. We've gone back and forth trying to figure out, how can we stay within our means but serve our students? And Linnor City Schools has a long history of doing that and being good stewards of the dollars and making sure they're going to serve kids. Um, that's, that's a fact. So, first and foremost of what we're doing, we're trying to provide that instructional experience for those grade levels in a way that's meaningful and purposeful for them. That's the priority and you can ask anyone about my motivation and what my team's motivation is and our school board's motivation is to make sure we're doing the right thing for kids. It's complicated, it's expensive, it's uncomfortable sometimes, but that, but that's what we signed up to do. And that's, that's what we're doing. Any questions about that? I would say, I would say, just quickly, Mayor, our architect, who has been working closely with our construction manager, Aaron Harlow from, uh, MBI is here to answer questions. And we'll get to the bond. Uh, again, we have a revised bond estimate. And Ms. Graham with Oakdale Bonds is, is here as well, if you have any questions. But we'll get to that in just a second.
Yeah, I want to, uh, obviously it's before us, but for the general public, I want them to know. And also, let me, let me say there about your photograph. And of course, I don't know, uh, I don't have those dates, but, uh, obviously that's probably when the sales tax was passed and, and the middle school was built. And, uh, and of course, you and I and everybody else in this room over to the, to your, to my right at, uh, tried to pass the sales tax. And, and, and it failed twice. And, and, uh, and it's sad that that, that happened, but it is what it is. But, uh, go ahead.
Well, we realized that and so we had to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, what can we afford to do within our means? We still have this problem of practice. We know what we need to do for our kids. So we went back to the drawing board. So, I appreciate you saying that, Mayor. This is a problem we've been trying to figure out the best way to solve for years. This is not a, a new idea that we just came up with. This is something that we had to go back and for really pinching pennies, trying to look at the dollars that the school board has saved so that we can use them appropriately to solve this problem that we have and make sure we're doing the right thing for our students. And let me say, section two, um, the why, why are we doing this? It's for our students. And so, I have in this section, in this header, it says, Linnor City Intermediate Middle School currently serves grades four through eight. This has become increasingly difficult given the current academic and social emotional needs of the students in this grade span, having them all together. And I want to say, these are Linnor City kids. These are our families in Linnor City. They're zoned to go to this school. This is not, we do have students from outside the county or outside the city limits. And we can't help that we're a school of choice. Of course they want to come to us. We have the best programs, we've got great facilities, we've got the best teachers and administrators. Of course they want to come here. Um, and if we can take them, we want to serve them because we know they're going to matriculate to our high school. And that's fantastic for this community. But make no mistake about it, eighty-five percent of the students that we're talking about serving this need are Linnor City families. And I have put our enrollment numbers as of four o'clock this afternoon, that chart. And we're talking about grades pre-K through eighth grade that we're serving. That chart is in your packet. I won't read it to you, but you have that information there to show that is, I don't know, four, three thirty this afternoon, we pulled those enrollment numbers. And we've actually had, uh, some new city students that have enrolled since I first wrote my, what I like to call my, my chair of inquiry paper, that's also included there. But these are our students. I'm not worried about anything that happens in the county because these are our students. And when we provide, when we continue to provide the programming that we know we need to do for our kids, they're not going anywhere. They're not going anywhere, they're going to stay with us and we are going to serve them. And we can't worry about what ifs. We, we've heard a lot of what ifs about things that might happen. And what I know for sure is, right now, there's a lot of dirt that's been talked about. But I have kids in classrooms that need to be served. And we have the building and the facilities to do it. We just need a little bit of help finishing that out. Um, and again, this has nothing to do with the high school. We're open, we have passed our resolution, our school board has been very open about that. That's been something that's been in place for many, many years. I shared that with county commission. I'm sure you guys have seen that before I even took this role. We're open to serve those students. So we want to make sure that the students in Linnor City have that pre-K through twelfth grade experience. And right now, those early years are a priority for us. We think about it all the time. We've been working very hard with our partners to help us figure out how to do it in the best possible, most economic way that we can to serve our kids. The second document in that section is the paper I wrote and shared. I've shared it with our families, I've shared it at our school board meetings, I'm sharing it here with you today. That details, um, very explicitly the why behind what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish with this project. And it also talks about a good stewardship of dollars that the school board has enjoyed uh, for many, many years, I think since nineteen oh seven. And I think that's something that should be appreciated and celebrated. And we should be thankful. I've, I've worked for a lot of, not for, but with and for school systems that are constantly in peril with their finances. I've never worked anywhere where a school system is so solid in their financial foundation with leadership way before I came. And in fact, you know, when I was a student here and when my brother was a student here, my mom was a student here, this district has taken care of the finances. But always managed to figure out the best way to serve kids. And this paper details that, just that, that rationale, that why, that history of what it is we're trying to accomplish. You know, I'm, I couldn't be more proud to be in the role that I'm in right now. It's one of those things where you didn't know you had the dream. But to be in a position where I'm the first Linnor City graduate to be the director of schools, I'm not going to be the one that does not stand up for the kids and do the right thing and continue the legacy for the reason that Linnor City Schools was started to begin with. And that is to separate us apart from our peers that surround us and makes us the district of choice to attend school. So, I feel very passionate about this. And, and that's why I felt the need to write and speak and share this information with everybody so we all understand where it is we're coming from. So, the what and the why for this project, that's sections one and two. The last one is how are we going to do it and how are we going to pay for it? And I, I told, I told the mayor, I appreciated it. He, he was like, you're working hard. I said, I am, I've learned more about bonds than I thought I would do because he made me go back three times. And he told me, no interest, you can't just make interest, you've got to make principal payments, you've got to do this, you've got to go to this bond company. And, yeah, that was, that was a lot of work, but I learned a lot. And I learned about the quality of financial, um, brain power that I have in my school system and the partners that we have that help us think through this and make sure we're doing the right thing for kids. And so, in the section three, there's a couple of things.
Kind of pressure here, I want you to go to different bond companies to check to make sure that, that.
Do my due diligence.
We're getting the best for a buck.
Hundred percent. And that was a great exercise for me. Um, I have a lot of learning opportunities in this job.
Can you go, can you go ahead and go over, uh, let me ask you this, uh, in your reserves. Uh, if I'm reading this right, uh, you have, uh, five, approximately five and a half, little five and a half million in reserves, correct?
All right, where, where, what?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the summary of the total cost of projects, twenty-five million, five hundred and eighty thousand, correct?
This page. Okay, yes, so the financial summary. Um, uh, one thing I want to share before I get into that, because I think it's very relevant to that, is you have a document in here that shows the difference between, um, when you do a design bid build project versus a construction manager project. This is very important because in Linnor City, we chose to do the construction manager process, which TSDA, uh, the Tennessee School Boards Association is recommending that we do because it is, it is the current best practice. Because what happens is, you have a max price budget. So when you go through a construction manager process in terms of the design and then the construction process, our construction manager is Denarc and they have a maximum price. So we set a budget and we said, this is what we can afford to pay. Denarc says, this is your max price budget. So, there's a handout in here that tells the difference between design bid build, which is a lot, which is what a lot of traditional construction does. And when you do that, you end up with a lot of change orders, you end up with, we know, we've experienced this in Linnor City. It costs us a lot of money and a lot of heartache. Um, we did not want to do that with this project because we knew we had a limited budget and we had a very specific goal in mind. And so our architects and our construction manager worked together. And so now we know, the numbers that you have in front of us, those are the hard numbers. As of this afternoon, this is what we have in terms of what our budget is and what we can afford to pay for. So, the overview, financial overview document that you have explicitly lines out how much that we're going to spend from the bond, which is twenty million dollars. And we have five million, five hundred and eighty, eighty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars in the money that we have saved as a school system to put toward this project.
What's your total reserves?
Our total, this is our capital fund. This is not our.
Mr. I wanted your total reserves right now.
It's six million and sales tax, five hundred and.
Six million?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, um, so you can see the breakdown under the projected costs of how much that's going to cost and where the dollars are going to come from. And you can see that our construction cost, that is our budget from Denarc. It's that twenty million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, that, that's our budget. That's Denarc's budget. That's what we're going to stay with in this project. So you can see what the total cost of the project is. And then to also say, we're not asking for sales tax, we're not asking for any additional burden. We're going to use our sales tax funds that we already have in place to fund this project in addition to our already, um, capital project reserve that we have. So this is just a summary of the breakdown. I think, I think council wanted some hard numbers. These are the hard numbers as of this afternoon, uh, about what this project is going to cost and where the numbers actually go. And I think it's very important to note that with the construction manager process that we're using, we're mitigating its construction, uh, but we're mitigating any, as much contingency as we possibly can. And making sure that we have a plan for that if it does happen. And that's all listed there in those numbers. I have an updated, uh, estimate for you from the Oakdale Bonds Company. And you can see, actually, you know what? I'm looking at the glass half full, I've learned a lot, even in a month, our, our costs have actually gone down, Mayor, because we, we waited just a little bit. So you can see on the second page of that slide deck, that's the Oakdale Bond, um, project. You can see that we've actually saved a little money since we, we waited a month to, to get these estimates. And again, I have Ms. Graham from Oakdale that can answer any specific questions.
So, so the total payback is thirty-seven million, thirty-one thousand, five hundred people involved.
I think the total debt service is thirty-two million, eight hundred and thirty-four.
Okay.
Seven oh eight.
I've selected proposed debt service.
Okay, so if you look at that last page, um, you can turn to the last page in that presentation, but I would also ask you to, because there's, there's a couple of nuances there, if you would also look at the last document in your packet that says proposed bond issuance or sales tax. So, this explains a little more in detail of how we're exactly going to pay our bonds. So, the first three columns on the Oakdale proposal talks about, um, the EESI loan. That is actually, comes out of our general purpose dollars. That is a project that we did through a grant with the state of Tennessee and Trane to make sure that all of our buildings were energy efficient. It was a project that we worked with in, under that, um, grant. And so, that payment, we actually get a check back from Trane to make that payment. So, we appreciate that being included in the Oakdale because it is a debt that we do have, but that is a wash. We don't actually, we don't lose money or we don't actually make that payment. We get that payback from Trane to cover that loan payment. And that was part of the project with the state of Tennessee and Trane and that energy efficiency project that we did. So I believe that was in two thousand and nineteen. So that actually saved the district quite a bit of money by doing that project. So, that is, is part of this Oakdale proposal and I appreciate that that's there because it is a transparency. It is a debt that we have, but it is part of a project that we have ongoing with Trane. So, if you look at the last page in this document. So if you look at the last page in this document, the proposed bond issuance from sales tax, which I think is really the most important document in here because it should, I hope it helps us weigh some fears in terms of how we're going to make the bond payment. So in the first column, you can see that we do have five years of an existing bond that we have to continue to pay off. And you know, it's for the kids. It's this project right here that we're paying off. We refinanced it several years ago to get a better deal, also save this money, but it takes us five more years to pay off that debt. But that's that existing payment. So then you can see in the next column, that's this bond that we're proposing, that we're requesting from city council to approve. And you can see those payments there, Mayor, only in precision. And that's just standard practice because it's in the middle of the year. The rest of the time, we're paying toward the principal. Then you can see our total debt service, which includes that, those five years of that existing bond that we have. And then if you look at the projected sales tax funds, if you would notice, we're projecting one point five million in sales tax. That's very conservative. Since two thousand and nine, our sales tax funds, our revenue has increased ninety percent. So we don't anticipate that number decreasing. We in fact expect it to increase, but if you would look in our model, being very conservative, we keep that number the same, exactly the same, just to prove the point that we can make these bond payments. And if you note, in the first five years, we do dip into the fund balance. And you can see that on those five years, we're finishing paying off the existing bond that we have. Once that bond is finished, not only will we be able to make the payment, we will actually be putting money back into our sales tax fund balance. By the end of this project, twenty-five years, not thirty, by the end of this project, we will have increased our sales tax fund balance from what it is right now. And that's if we don't get another dollar than what we already get, the one point five million. So we put a lot of work into this to make sure that we're doing the right thing and not overextending ourselves, making sure that we can afford this. This is not out of general purpose. This is not tied to our T-SU general student funding formula. It has nothing to do with enrollment. So if, I don't think it's going to happen, but if we were to lose enrollment, it would not impact our ability to pay this bond. And in fact, I think our sales tax will increase, but let's just say something horrible happens and we lose money in sales tax. If you know, in our sales tax fund balance, we can still make the payment. This is the most conservative, most fiscally responsible way that we went back to the drawing board to find a way to meet the needs of our kids. We've done our homework, we've saved, we've gone back and forth many times with our architect, changing the plans, trying to figure out, making sure that we have what we need, but that we can afford it. And I just would respectfully ask city council to trust the Lenore City School Board as it has for a long time to serve and meet the needs of our kids and do the right thing. These are our students in this city. These are not other kids. The overwhelming majority of these students are our students. And we need to do right by them. And I just respectfully ask, hopefully I would address your questions. I asked Mayor, please let me have time with you guys today just to maybe answer some of the questions you had from the combined workshop, listen to our parts and maybe just get some clarification. We've gone back, done our homework, tried to put information together in a way that makes sense. And I just ask, please let's work together, please let's work together to serve our students. And I would want to personally invite you guys to come to the middle school next week. Ms. Loane and Ms. Long are ready and willing and they put on a great tour. If you come at ten o'clock on Monday the twentieth and just see what it is we're trying to do there and see our kids and look at the students, the fourth graders. You know, one of the kids asked me, the sixth graders, they said, we need a little more time to go to the restroom for restroom rates. And I'm like, what the heck? So I go back to Ms. Long and I'm like, what's up with the kids and I'm going? She said, I don't want them to be in the restroom with the fourth graders. So we have to figure out a schedule so that they can have separate time. And it's just too difficult to do that with the constraints that we have, with the schedule and with the locations of where everything is. We have got to do this for these kids. It's the right thing to do. And we have the financial means to do it. And I understand, Mayor, holding me accountable, making sure that we're doing the right thing. But this is, this is just the right thing to do for our kids and we can afford to do it. And I would just respectfully ask that you all consider this and work with us and partner with us to make this happen for Lenore City Schools.
Thank you, appreciate it, good presentation. All right, city council, do you have any questions for Dr. Smith?
Looking forward to the tour next week.
Thank you.
I hear it's great.
Yeah, it's a good tour. I can't promise the bond case, I don't know, we'll see. If there were bond cases last time, so I don't know, we'll see. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions, any concerns? We paid the bills.
I make a motion that all bills are to be paid with properly approved and the funds are available.
Okay, Ms. Long, we've paid the bills, have a second. Second, Mr. Shields, discussion. Rokoff.
McAdams.
Aye.
Lomper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
I guess I've been the longest needy mayor.
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Mr. Shields, I make a motion to adjourn, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. McAdams, Ms. Brandon, Ms. William Rokoff.
McAdams.
Aye.
Lomper.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.